Okay, announcement of public notice. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. As required under law, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided via email and/or fax to The Times, The Lawrence Ledger, The Public Library, and has been filed with the municipal clerk. This notice was provided prior to 48 hours required by the Open Public Meeting Act. The Board reserves a right to limit public discussion of personnel items and other matters as defined in the law. We will now have the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, we will have our student representative report.
My name is Shriya Fuddi. I am a junior from Lawrence High School, and we're part of peer leadership. So, I'm just going to be talking about a few events that we've already had and some that are upcoming. So, upcoming, we have Haunted High and Fall Fest. It's going to be next Friday on the 28th. It's run by Ms. D., Ms. Welsh, and CIA, and a bunch of organizations in the school are having booths there. So, they're, all the proceeds raised will go back to the organizations. And we just had Hispanic Heritage Month, and like, our celebration, it was last Saturday, it was a huge success, and there was a ton of great food. So, if you guys went, I'm sure you had a great time. And we had Garb Night on the 2nd of this month, and it was a lot of fun. It was run by International Alliance, and there was good dancing and good food. So, overall, a great time. I'm going to hand it off to my friend, Kajol.
Hi, I'm Kajol. I'm a junior. I'm also part of the peer leadership program here. I'm just going to talk about some updates. Our girls' field hockey team is in the Mercer County Tournament Finals. Our lady cards put a tough fight on and are looking forward to take the victory like they did last year. Our annual senior versus junior patterpup game is coming up on November 8th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We're all looking forward to it, and everybody's very excited. The Theater Company has the fall show coming up, Sweet Surrender, on November 17th, 18th, and 19th, and tickets are on sale.
My name is Tricia Patel, and I am a junior at LHS. Here are some more updates. Spring sports are coming to a wrap soon for tennis. Our season is ending next week, but it is subject to change. Our record as of right now is 9-4. We also went to MCTs and states, and there are four more games left of the season. Looking forward, winter sports will be starting soon. There are also seniors, there was also a senior juniors workshop that was on October 13th. LHS counselors hosted Ariel Mateos for the financial aid workshop. Virtual, the virtual workshop on October, there will be a virtual, there was a virtual workshop on October 6th at 6:00 p.m. For anyone with questions, you can contact the guidance counselor for more info about it.
Hi, I'm Lamar. Here are some more updates. We had just finished state testing for the PSATs for juniors and sophomores on October 12th. For the Week of Respect is celebrated throughout October 3rd to 7th. Banners are hanging out throughout our hallway, and CIA, Community in Action, has posted with motivation phrases, motivational phrases throughout the lockers and the bathrooms for positivity around the building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay.
Thank you, have a good night.
Have a good night. Next, we will have recognition and acknowledgements.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. At the beginning of October, our schools celebrated the Week of Respect. Students at all levels participated in activities to promote safe and respectful learning environments, such as Respect Your Story, days which were full of unique, student-centered stories and adventures. Several schools ended their week-long celebrations of kindness with festivities to encourage year-long respect. In other great news, last night, our district received two awards for Outstanding School Communications from the New Jersey School Public Relations Association. The first award our district won highlighted photography, thanks to great photos and pictures by Ashaya Draper, Benny Williams, and Sam Pastorella, of items of students and staff captured through the year. And our second award was for Public Information Campaign, dedicated to highlighting the aspirations and goals and the poster that we made for our strategic plan. So, again, a lot of that was Ashaya, so thank you very much. And those acclimates supplement the national award that Lawrence District, our schools, won in June for Well-Planned Publications, the expert use of digital media to communicate with students and families. So, another feather in our cap for communications, well done. My last piece, I just want to acknowledge that we do have our board attorney with us tonight, John Comagno, and appreciate his time being here. And we also have elected board member Aaron Del Clark in the audience, and the reason why he's not at the table yet is just because we're waiting for paperwork and fingerprints to clear. But I appreciate you showing up tonight and sitting in the audience. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Casey. Now, for the adoption of minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, with a motion and a second, if you could please call the roll.
Ms. Posey, is she here?
No.
Okay. Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Grober?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Pluta?
Yes.
Ms. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Van Heys?
Yes.
Ms. Farmer?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Thank you. And now, we'll have reports to the board by Superintendent Casey.
Thank you. One of the goals in our strategic plan is to create a strong sense of belonging for every student, every staff member, and all of our families. We must welcome, celebrate, and build relationships with every member of our school community. We know that having every student feel accepted and having every student feel a sense of belonging creates and enhances excellence in student achievement. Lawrence Township is an amazing community that celebrates its diversity. Each time we survey our parents, we talk to our families, we meet with the community, and plan for our future, every time, the incredible diversity of our community comes out as one of our biggest strengths and assets. Being so diverse, our classrooms have students with a wide range of backgrounds, a wide range of ethnicities, race, religious beliefs, economic statuses, sexual orientations, and more. And this goes way beyond our students in the classroom, as each of them, when they come in, they bring their diversity and the experiences of their families. Thus, meeting the goal of having all students feel that they belong, it's a lofty goal, but it's an important one. We have done many things to help make this goal a reality, such as changing our back-to-school nights to back-to-school night bonanzas, and hosting open houses to invite, welcome, and to get to know our families. Next board meeting on November 9th, I will be making a full progress report to the board about the goal of belonging. And that stated, we have high expectations of staff for professionalism, and when staff do not meet those expectations, we immediately address it. I have read posts in the recent day and a half, they're just simply absurd, and attempting to ignite others, to make a statement such as our board or administrators, which many are here and many of you know them, are on board when someone is not professional, or we accept when something is not the very best for our students. It's simply not true. We attend swiftly to every situation and deal with it in the best interest of our students. We work hard and diligently to keep the divide that is so prevalent in our nation out of our classrooms and away from our students. I'm truly disappointed that some take such situations, some who are never in our schools and have no idea what Lawrence is about, make it to benefit their agendas and take it to a level where it polarizes our community. It needs to stop, because actions like this do not help our students, and they do not help our district. Our ultimate goal is to create safe school cultures where all students learn and achieve in environments where all students feel that they, and they know that they belong. That's our agenda, and that's the agenda that all of us should be working towards. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Casey. And now, we will have our board secretary report.
I'm going to defer this evening to the finance chair. Thank you.
Hey, also, in my report also, we, by code, we must do the presentation of the HIB self-assessment report, so I have, and I know on the agenda it says Melanie Philmyer, Mr. Clifton Thompson is going to be sharing that tonight. And afterwards, we have a hearing to make anybody that wants to make a comment on only the HIB report.
Thank you.
I'm Clifton Thompson, and tonight I'll be presenting as the district HIB coordinator.
Do you just want to head forward here?
All right. Do you want me to just click? Should I click for you? I didn't click.
Thanks, Ashaya.
Thank you.
The NJDOE requires that we complete an annual self-assessment and then report those scores to the community and the school board. And to make sure that we're in compliance with the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. And really, that's to make sure that we handle situations with students when they don't treat each other correctly, or if adults don't treat students correctly, to make sure that as a district, we're making, we're doing what we're supposed to do to make our buildings safe for students, to make them know that they are welcome, that their identities, that their personalities, that who they are, their character, is seen and valued, and they're not teased for those things in any way. So, the HIB self-assessment has eight areas or elements that we have to answer questions regarding, and they go from HIB programs to HIB reporting, personnel, incident reporting, to make sure, again, we are self-assessing to see what we're doing correctly. Each of those core elements, the questions are asked, and we're given a score between 0 and 3. If you meet all requirements, your minimum score would be a 52, and that would be good, out of a total of possible 78 points. And these are our school scores. You'll see, we range from 69 to 77. If we were to give a grade for that, it would be a B+, would be our lowest score, which means we're doing a pretty good job. Is there room for improvement? Yes. Some of those areas are just making sure we keep agendas, or we're reporting on the proper dates, or we have the correct number of meetings, but we are actually doing rather well. We have a board policy about harassment, intimidation, and bullying, 5512. You can find that on the website that has been updated, and it will be under the board policy section of the website. Please check it out. And there's also a HIB reporting form that you can find under the guidance section of the website. You complete the form, you send it to the correct person at the school, which we'll list later, and then we will start an investigation to make sure that your claims are addressed. Just because you fill this form out doesn't mean that the claims are founded, but whether it's a founded HIB or not, we make sure that we counsel students and we talk to students, both alleged offender and alleged victim, to make sure that they know that they're valued in our schools. And I keep repeating that and can't repeat it enough, because it means so much to families and students. The software program platform that we're using is called Hipster. That keeps track of timetables. It sends emails when we're out of compliance, when we're close to becoming out of compliance with regard to the number of days to complete the investigation, to call parents, to inform everyone of what the outcome was of the HIB. Our HIB specialists at East School, I will read that, Ben Franklin, Ms. Destiny Cherry, Eldridge Park, Ms. Patricia Burns, Lawrenceville Elementary School, Ms. Melissa Wall, Slackwood School, Ms. Kristin Hobson, LIS, Ms. Patricia Esser, LMS, Ms. Elizabeth Winaree Corini, excuse me, and LHS, Mr. Christian D'Angelo. These are the people that will investigate if something is going on. However, if there's an allegation of a HIB adult to student, I will do that investigation, so that people in the same bargaining unit don't investigate each other, so that it doesn't seem as if a building administrator is covering for their favorite teacher or anything like that. So, I take over that investigation to make sure. And there's HIB specialist trainings, so that they know what they're doing, so that they're up to date when they're investigating, when they're looking at the law and what it actually means. So, I will do another presentation. The HIB law for harassment, intimidation, and bullying is different than what we consider bullying. So, the bullying that some of the people that grew up in the old century, as my daughter would say, knew, does not necessarily mean that it's a founded HIB allegation, because the HIB allegations have to impact a characteristic. The student has to actually feel as if it ruined their day. Quick example, got a call home, my son was an alleged victim of a HIB. I found that to be amazing, because I was glad he wasn't the alleged offender, and it ended up not what happened, what was reported actually happened. It was not a founded HIB, because it did not impact his day. When we asked him about it, he was like, "Oh, yeah, that happened in the morning. I didn't pay attention to it." So, it didn't impact his day. It wasn't founded, even though what was reported actually happened. Hopefully, that student received the counseling they needed. So, we have training on how to look at that. And then, we have some anti-bullying initiatives at all the schools. Like we said, the back-to-school bonanza, popsicles in the playground, meet and greets, jumpstart programs, home visits, ambassadors, cardinal code recognition on Fridays, summer orientation, all these things to make sure our kids know how to treat each other and know what's expected of them in our schools. We did, as you heard, the student ambassadors talk about Week of Respect. All of our schools participated between October 3rd and 7th, and this is just a few examples of what was done. Respect our emergency responders, respect our community. At Slackwood, they talked about stomping out bullying, and they talked about what a bully was, what a target was, what an upstander was, what a bystander was, with video links. These are some of the pictures from our elementary schools of students participating in Week of Respect activities. Our high school staff walked the halls in these yellow shirts, and so did central office staff, cheering students up during passing periods, letting them know that we cared about them, that they belonged, that we loved them, as they went from class to class. And those are the things that go on in Lawrence Township Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clifton.
At this time, we have an opportunity, if there are any questions on that presentation Please state your name, your address.
My name's Carlos Rosario Rodriguez, 55 Maryland Avenue. My question is, how is the board making students feel safe enough to report HIBs in the first place? As you may or may not know, there is, there are many unspoken social rules amongst adolescents, snitching, to put it colloquially, and I just want to, want to ask you how you guys plan on tackling it, if this is on your radar, and, yeah, just any clarification on the matter.
One of the things I'd like to share in response to that is, we are adopting a reporting system where people can anonymously use the website, use their phones. It's called Stop Solutions, and we are going to be rolling that out in the next month, where people can do those types of reports, but they can also ask for self-help, they can ask for help from friends. So, we're really trying to make sure we, and again, we talk about this stuff all the time in our classrooms, and I think, you know, when you look at some of the posters and some of the status survey, our kids feel confident. Is it every kid? No. So, we are coming up with other ways to make sure that we are reaching everybody.
If you had to quantify how many kids felt confident enough to report an HIB, would you have a rough idea?
No, and this isn't really a question and answer. I just wanted to share about the reporting system that we're putting in.
Fair enough. And I have another question. May I proceed?
Go ahead.
Okay. The part of the, one of your metrics, at least that's what was told to me by one of the members, of measuring, of quantifying a sense of well-being in the student population, was that students would be surveyed. In my time, I only remember being surveyed once throughout my entire four-year high school career. I'm just going to asking, how many times are students being surveyed, and is that enough to collect enough data to make any type of correlations on the matter?
We probably survey our students too much.
And how much, like a quantity, a number? What would that number be?
I don't know. And again, we can run over that. We are in a program with Rutgers that I'm sure Mr. Thompson would be happy to sit down and answer all your questions about what we're doing as far as those things.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Krista Murphy. My daughter is in LMS. I guess I kind of want to know, when your child faces some kind of bullying in some sort, and you do go to the school, and you tell them that this has been going on for quite some time, and needless to say, I approached Dr. Merrill about it at the end of last year, and this escalated into a situation where my daughter actually smacked the boy across the face, which I do not promote, however. Throughout the year, this one specific child, excuse me, would continuously go up to her and say horrible things to her, and promote other boys to actually sexually harass her, and it got to the point where she exploded at the end of the year. That being said, I went to Ms. Merrill, because he suspended her, and I asked him to do an investigation, and he said he did, only to find out that my daughter came home and said that he only asked one student, and it happened to be the child's best friend in question. And of course, the kid covered for him, and nothing was ever rectified. Now, my child has to sit in the class with this boy, and she doesn't feel comfortable. Every day, she has to tie a hoodie around her waist. It's embarrassing.
I appreciate you sharing that with us. Again, this is supposed to be up the HIB report, and I would say to anybody, if they're having issues like you're having, talk to the school administration. If you're not getting the answer that you want, my number is posted everywhere. I return every phone call. Give me a call, and we'll sit and talk.
Do you realize how many fights have been in the school this week, recorded and posted on social media? There is another boy who apparently beat up another boy this week, because he is being bullied every day. Every day. But he got the one, he's going to be the one that's going to get in trouble for something that he's being bullied for, because he said that the other boy lied and said, you know, made accusations, but really, this kid's being picked on for his family every day, and it's disgusting. There's no ramifications for any of this, and quite frankly, I'm baffled. I can go to the administration, I did, and now you opened up an investigation, and for what end? I have a girl, a 13-year-old girl.
I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Yeah. I'm going to hold my breath.
Okay. So, no other comments, we'll move on to, oh, we got one?
Mr. Maldonado, in reference to the last-
Did you just list your address? I'm sorry. Name and address.
Slack Avenue, Everett, Maldonado, Slack Avenue. In reference to the last individual that was on the podium, I had similar situations. I have daughters also in school in the past. If you're not getting any answers from the school, get your local police department involved, especially when it's an assault, even if the kid is a minor and the school refuses to do anything about it. Get your locals involved. Obviously, we'll give you a call tomorrow. That's not an answer, and that's unacceptable.
Okay.
That's a very serious situation that you're dealing with, with your kid and your daughter that's being harassed and bullied, and they're getting up here on the podium claiming they're anti-bullying.
Sir. Sir, this is public comment to the Board of Education.
They're not doing anything about it.
Do you have a comment to the Board of Education, sir?
That is my comment.
Okay. Thank you.
Do something about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, no other comments, we'll move to the board secretary report, please.
All of my items are inside of the SPM section this evening. Just to bring to your attention that I'm sure the finance committee met last week, and Ms. Evans will have a full report. I believe there were 14 different items there. Some of the things, just to bring to your attention on the agenda so as not to cause a stir, is that we have the application to conduct school facilities projects for a number of things. It doesn't mean we're actually going to undertake them, it just means we're filing the projects in the case that we'd like to. Some of those things include the, a room division at the middle school, also conversion of locker rooms at the intermediate school into classrooms, and we'll also be looking at lighting the multi-sports field between the high school and the middle school. Some other things that are there are many, many policies for your review. As you're familiar with, we have a practice, not a policy, but a practice of reviewing our policies and having them age no longer than three years before we revisit them, so you'll see some things there. We are up to date on those types of things. And then, we also have the comprehensive maintenance plan there, which is a financial plan. It'll be submitted tomorrow to the county office, and it just essentially represents what we spend in terms of maintenance to upkeep our buildings. Outside of that, everything else will be in the finance report provided by the chair, Ms. Evans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eldridge. Okay, for president's report, I just want to say, thank you to the two parents who spoke here today about your bravery in bringing that forward to the board. These matters are very serious and, you know, require attention, so I know it takes a lot to come here and share that with us, so thank you for that, and we will do our best to follow up with you. I also wanted to- The, I also wanted to, as Dr. Kason said, welcome our newest member to the Board, Arundel Clark, pending all background checks. We look forward to seeing him here as well. And I also want to thank all of the outstanding applicants who were here last week. We hope that you will stay engaged with us, because you all really were outstanding. And lastly, I'd like to say, looking forward, the Board, we will be attending the annual New Jersey School Board Association Workshop next week, over the three days, 24th, 25th, and 26th. And looking forward to that. Okay, all I have. And moving right along, we will now have our community reports, beginning with Community Relations and Legislative Affairs. I believe we do not have a report this evening, is that correct? Okay. Negotiations, there is no report. And now we'll go to Equity.
Yes, Clifton and I just met on September 23rd. It was just the two of us. We discussed briefly some parent meetings that are going to be happening with the Equity Champions, the new information and instructional tools that are going to be going on our new and improved website. Clifton also attended the City Council Equity Committee meeting, who said they're willing to provide community support and assistance in our equity affairs. We also had a discussion about how to work with the Special Olympics of New Jersey, potentially about having students volunteer with this, and how we'll get the word out to in-district and out-of-district students for these opportunities.
Okay, thank you. Next, we will have our Guidance and Mental Health Report.
Guidance and Mental Health, met this morning. In attendance was Dr. Ross Kason, Linda Mythog, Clifton Thompson, Melanie Philmeyer, Pepper Evans, myself, and Michelle Bose. We met from 8:00 to 9:10. Minutes from that, the Sage Counselor that is present at the elementary level, there's an additional one at the LIS level, LMS and LHS also have their own Sage Counselors. LIS is reporting significant positive impact specifically from the Sage Counselor in their school, supporting those students most in need, alleviating, or allowing other administrators to tend to other needs. So each school is providing a variety of emotional mental health supports tailored to the students, not just through the Sage Counselor and other means. A full report on the multiple programs and supports that have been enacted will be presented at a future Board meeting. George Scott will be present in the district for some upcoming trainings. George Scott is a well-known counselor locally and a remarkable presenter. He will be offering trainings to our Guidance Counselors K to 12, specifically on how to run groups to assist students to better identify their emotions and develop coping skills in response. On October 24th, he will be, George Scott will be here training staff at the Lawrence High School to deal with the loss that LHS experienced in the recent past, and how those, how their feelings impact students and learning. On November 1st, he will be here in the auditorium at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, November 1st, to present to parents and caregivers. The title of that presentation, "An Inconvenient Truth: The Challenges of Raising Healthy Children", that's being well-marketed right now, so you should see some other reminders about that presentation. Financial Aid Night was held for parents on October 13th. It was held virtually. Over 70 parents attended with the ability to not just listen, but ask questions and learn about financial aid planning for college. They had the ability to submit their questions that were then read aloud anonymously to, you know, encourage people to get their questions answered. This was a remarkable improvement in attendance over three years ago, when the same presentation was held in person. On October 24th, there was an information session held for juniors and seniors interested in vocational technical programs. There will be a session available in the evening for parents and students who could not attend, well, for parents, and also for students who could not attend the October LHS is also noticing the significant positive impacts packed in terms of the increase in staff in their Guidance Department. Again, Dr. Kason will share in an upcoming meeting the new services and activities that that department has been able to accomplish as a result of the additional counseling staff. Goods from Guidance Newsletter comes out the first Monday of the month, and it is filled with plenty of information. And Corey Rutte, one of our newest additions to the counseling staff at the high school, is responsible for that newsletter and has done an amazing job. And that's, that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Okay, next is Liaison Report, New Jersey School Board Association.
Okay, I went to a webinar, October 5th, which was a Wednesday, from 11:00 to 12:00, and it was dealing with teacher shortages, Grow Your Own, and it was something that we pretty much do already, encouraging students 11th and 12th grade. The center is located at the College of New Jersey, which was new to me, I didn't realize that was there. And the mission is for recruiting future educators, and if you've been to Board meetings, you know that we have a lack of substitute teachers, and the teacher pool is dwindling. So this is a really great way to get our students interested in the career path and grow our own. So that was an exciting webinar. Then Mercer County Meeting was held here at Lawrence High School in the Commons. That was October 6th at 6:00 PM. We had Karen Cordolino invite all of us to attend Resolution Committee, which is going to be held in November, and that's at the Mercer County Community College. We're all members, so we're able to attend. I represent our Board for voting, so it's, it would be a good experience for others to jump in and see what it's all about. She also talked a little bit about the convention teacher workshop, reminding all the Board members that this year, the jitneys will be the only form of transportation. They used to have buses taking you from hotel to the center. They're jitneys, so you'll have to look for those out front, and they'll be down at your hotels. And let's see, the speaker, the featured speaker was Evelyn Moon, the Director of Education for the Good Grief Program, which there's a location in Princeton that's nearby us. The topic was supporting students through loss and adversity. The three key items that were repeated throughout the presentation were to listen, use clear language, and to employ empathy when talking with children, adults, family members. Our next county meeting will be December 1st at West Windsor Plains Bow, and I think it's about security for schools, so stay tuned in case that changes. Resolution Subcommittee met October 11th, that was 4:30 PM, it was a WebEx. And the resolution that was considered was submitted by Dover in Morris County, and the topic was addressing gun control, and it was more or less reflected on the age of purchasing a weapon. And through looking through policies through New Jersey School Board, the policies really covered everything that Dover brought up, that they wanted all of us to adopt. So the resolution did not stand, and they still have the opportunity to come again and re-present it at that November meeting. And you talked about workshop already. Project Graduation met Monday, October 3rd, 8:00 to 9:00 PM, hybrid. Several Board vacancies have been filled, so thank you for the parents that stepped up, because it's a super important event for our seniors. As you know, it's drug and alcohol-free event, and it's for all seniors, and it occurs right after graduation. Excuse me. Direct Link met October 5th, virtual 10 o'clock. Roy Ross introduced PIMI to everybody, talked a little bit about the strategic plan. Ashai runs a tight ship, he did a great job. He informed all the attendees about the process with digital communication, the website maintenance. He encouraged all attendees to forward any activities, notifications from their groups onto him, so he can post it on our website. I'd like to thank all the groups for providing outstanding opportunities for our families and our students throughout the entire school year. And LTEF wanted me to remind everybody that you still can buy a raffle ticket for No Tricks, oh, golly, I'm forgetting the name of it, Just Treats. And that until October 30th. So please, get them, they're awesome raffles, so look it up if you haven't checked it out. And I will, that's the end of my reports.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Lawrence Town Council, there is no report, as well as Lawrence Township Growth and Redevelopment. Direct Link, we have heard from. Partnership, there is no report as of yet. They are hosting an event this Saturday for Every Child's Value, so that is taking place. Next, that brings us to Mercer County Votech.
We've not met, we will meet on October 25th.
And then, Special Education.
Yes, Linda Mythog and I met on October 6th. We talked about reorganizing the Special Education Parent Advocacy Group, with a few parents who had run it last year, and them being involved in brainstorming topics for upcoming meetings. We may send out a survey to parents for topics and about availability. We talked about Linda's future replacement, which you'll hear more about soon. And we also discussed the presentation by George Scott that he'll be giving on November 1st. We also discussed having more documents and school communication being sent out in different languages. We're working with a new translation agency on that. And Linda and I also discussed Special Olympics and having a designated school for that partnership.
Thank you. And next, Review of Communications, do we have any?
There are none.
There are none? Okay. With that being said, we are now at the first opportunity for public input. We ask that you come to the podium, state your name, address, and please give it to three minutes. Give me one second.
Dr. Anna Samuel, 307 Bergen Street. I'm here with five of my neighbors, four of my neighbors. We're going to give brief statements, under three minutes each. The first two of our statements are about how we believe the transgender policy in the curricula here puts children at risk. The next statement is about how the policy tramples upon the constitutionally protected rights of parents. The fourth speech will be about how the transgender policy violates the right to fair play for girls in athletics. And the fifth statement is about how the transgender policy goes outside the proper boundaries of public education. Our township's curricula strongly encourages children to question their gender and moves them towards the slippery slope of transgender treatment plans. As people may or may not know, there are four basic stages to these transgender treatment plans. The first is social transition, where a child is encouraged to dress and behave like the opposite sex, take on a new name and pronouns. And we have a little handout that shows what these stages are. The puberty blockers stage comes next. Around 10 years old or 5th grade, kids are given hormones to stop them from going through puberty. Stage three involves cross-sex hormones around age 16. Girls receive masculinizing hormones like testosterone, and boys are administered hormones like estrogen. The girls grow facial hair, hear their voices get deeper, and experience strong side effects like unexplained bouts of anger and aggression from the excess testosterone. The boys develop breast tissue and take on more of an androgenous form. If they take the hormones long enough, they become infertile. It's a slow-motion process of chemical sterilization. Finally, the fourth stage, sex reassignment surgery, is when surgeons remove body parts associated with their sex and use plastic surgery to construct parts that imitate the organs of the opposite sex. The patient becomes a lifelong customer of medical surgeries and pharmaceutical interventions. Lawrence's curricula and policy primarily encourages stage one of this process, but school staff may be encouraging stage two as well. And once a child is ushered into stage one, it's much more likely that he or she will continue down this destructive path. The social studies curriculum in every grade level, starting kindergarten, offers lessons and storybooks that normalize cross-dressing, glamorize gender bending, and encourage new names and pronouns, teaching kids that a person's internal sense of gender is what matters, not the objective reality of their bodies. In the 4th grade, for example, students get a lesson on the gender snow person, where children are invited to think of themselves as snow beings and play a game like Mr. Potato Head to be anything they want of whatever gender, irrespective of their bodily design. These lessons don't just stay neutral or level the playing field, no, they indoctrinate. They encourage our children to think that their bodies don't matter when it comes to their identity, teaching them that their bodies are fluid and changeable, like snow. Furthermore, it's likely that the school is referring children out to counselors who can get them puberty blockers. Judging by this clause of the New Jersey transgender policy, and I quote, "The school district may seek a variety of professionals who are knowledgeable regarding issues relevant to transgender students who may be transitioning." Lawrence is ushering our kids towards transgender ideation. Thank you very much. We'll continue next.
Thank you, my name is Carlos Rosario Rodriguez. I live at 55 Maryland Avenue. I could tell you that as someone who has recently graduated from the school, that what the previous speaker just mentioned is not accurate, it's not true whatsoever. I never once was encouraged to change my gender. I never, I was never encouraged to do anything that I did not want to do. And in fact, I thought it taught the controversy, and it gave people a space to speak and talk about their lived experiences as your children. Finally, what practices have the school instituted, has the school instituted to encourage wellness as part of its strategic plan? I find it was a bit vague, and I just want some clarification on what practices specifically has the school encouraged, implemented to make sure students feel that they belong, feel less lonely, et cetera?
We will be giving reports on that throughout the year. So again, this is not a question and answer piece, and I will be giving reports-
I'm aware of the forum, the format of this forum, thank you. And I had one final question. I believe I have a minute and 57 seconds left.
Okay, yes, I know, but we're going to be respectful, no-
Concerns about, I have a concern about the student rep report, given that your, that the student reps are curated by the school, are they being used as a barometer to understand student, the student environment?
This is just public input, there is no back and forth.
So are you unwilling to answer the question?
Let's pause the clock for a minute. And this is for everyone, and good evening, thank you for your comments. Everyone is encouraged to speak, folks. This is a public Board of Education meeting. It's a meeting of the Board of Education in public. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments and provide public input for the actions of your elected officials. If you have questions, you're free to ask them. If there's an opportunity to answer them quickly, they'll be answered. Otherwise, someone up here in the administration will get back to you if you want to provide a way for the administration to get back to you, all right? So you can ask as many questions as you want, but this isn't a back and forth. Okay, let's start the clock again.
Thank you. No, I understood the format of the forum, and so it sounds like I'm going to get an answer immediately, so I thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Dr. Janet Madigan. I live on Dustin Drive in Lawrence Township. I'm the mother of five and a lecturer in civil liberties at Princeton University. Right now, there are significant medical controversies about the benefits versus the risks of social transition and hormonal treatments. These debates are taking place in well-respected academic journals among experts in the field. Puberty blockers are not FDA-approved. The medical community has long been aware of the health risks associated with these drugs, slower body growth, low bone density, a higher risk for early osteoporosis, high blood pressure, weight gain, mood disorders, breast cancer, liver disease, blood clots, and cardiovascular disease. This past July, the U.S. Food and Drug Administration released the warning that six children on puberty blockers had suffered from pseudo-tumor cerebri, or brain swelling and vision loss. This summer, Britain's primary gender clinic, Tavistock Clinic, closed. An independent review committee concluded that the clinic was leaving young people at, quote, "considerable risk of poor mental health and distress," unquote. Their model of gender-affirming care, one widely used in the U.S. gender clinics, is now being revamped, because there wasn't evidence that affirming the gender identity actually helped to reduce suicide rates or gender distress. Proponents of these plans usually argue that the high risks are worth taking because of the risk of- of the risk of suicide among youth who are gender dysphoric. However, there are no strong studies to back up the claim that these hormone treatments actually decrease suicide risk. The studies are poorly supported based on small convenience samples and lack control groups. It is not science but ideology that is driving these treatment plans. In the last five years, researchers have seen an explosion in the phenomenon of detransitioners. Just Google "my detransition story" on YouTube, and you will see hundreds of personal testimonies of teenagers who have regretted their transition. They detail how their experimental treatments ravished their bodies, destroyed their fertility, left their vocal cords unrecognizable, and only worsened their mental health. They repeatedly say that the adults in their lives failed to protect them. By contrast, when children are allowed to go through puberty, there's an 80% to 95% chance that their transgender feelings will resolve on their own. They learn to embrace their natural biological sex and be at peace with their bodies. Simply put, there are better ways of caring for our gender-distressed children. Given the severity of everything at stake, we would expect our school district and state representatives to exercise extreme caution when it comes to experimenting on our children's health and safety. Instead, policies 5756 ushers our children down the path toward transition, putting them at odds with their bodies, encouraging them to be lifelong patients of medical care. Thank you for your time.
My name is Angela Lee. I'm here on behalf of my son, Anthony Lee. He is a 1st grader in Ben Franklin School.
Did you state your address, I'm sorry?
Oh, Merritt Drive, sorry, 53 Merritt. And we kind of give a synopsis or a summation of what I'm speaking about or why I'm here. I just want to read an email, if that's appropriate, to, from, that I sent to Principal Billy, and that will explain everything. I don't know if I could use names of teachers, so I'll just, I guess, can you pause that a minute so I can get a response?
Yeah. Thank you for the courtesy of your question. We would appreciate you not using names, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
You can start, okay. I said, "Mr. Billy, it has come to my attention that my son has been commenting with regards to learning about LGBTQ community heroes by his teacher unnamed. It has also come to my attention through social media that the teacher wore a, quote-unquote, 'Columbus was a murderer' shirt to your school. I have several problems with what is being taught here and what is being allowed with respect to the wearing of the shirt. First, let me start off by saying that I am not concerned with how, who, what, or where a person identifies and/or their beliefs, okay? What they believe, they have every right to do so. I have no problem with anyone's opinions or feelings regarding the same either. What I do have a problem with is the indoctrination of children, specifically in 1st grade, who don't know, grasp, or hardly understand the LGBTQ concept, nor what any of it means. Children should be learning and developing skills to assist them in reading, writing, math, and other curriculum designed to aid them to attain 2nd grade." When my son, when my 6-year-old son told me today that he learned about Menderva Singh Ghohil, who was the first openly gay prince and has a trust that works with LGBTQ, and was afraid of being banished, I questioned the teacher's intent or why this person is even in discussion with 1st graders. He was scared about this word "banished," which, you know, I understand. While I appreciate aspects of the LGBTQ community, I don't feel it should be the sole focus for its own subject matter in 1st grade. If this is based on the curriculum of critical race theory, then I question the authenticity of the program itself. My son is, my son is my responsibility, as I have the duty and obligation to care for him, love him, provide sustenance for his well-being, as well as to give him a moral compass to succeed in life. The Ben Franklin School and/or the teachers do not have the right to enable or influence my child's belief or value system. It is my responsibility, as well as his mother, as a parent, to make sure my children are well-rounded to prepare them for success and independence. I do not take this lightly, as I will be going to you guys, as I said, with why this is being taught in 1st grade. Again, let me reiterate, the fact that this teacher, as well as any other teachers, can have whatever perspective, identification, or beliefs, I believe that we have free will as humans to make whatever choices in life, but I draw the line when such perspectives or beliefs are pushed onto my child.
Hi, my name is Martha Friend, 976 Lawrenceville Road. I was just clarifying, when we have some folks talking about beta blocker, not beta blockers, blockers, hormone blockers, is any of that in the purview of this Board of Ed to make decisions about what happens with a child and their, whether they're getting blockers? Is any of that, I don't know if you can answer, no? All right, I just wanted to clarify that that has nothing to do with what we're doing here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is April Redlinger. I'm at 226 Moore Street. I'm a mother of three children. I'm also an attorney, and I've worked in the federal courts and practiced civil litigation for 16 years. Today, I'd like to address the township's policy on the treatment of transgender students in the context of parental rights. A long line of cases from the United States Supreme Court establishes that parents have a constitutional right to direct the upbringing and education of their children. The court has gone on to describe this as an essential right that is perhaps the oldest of the fundamental liberty interests recognized by the courts, and that has been established beyond debate as an enduring American tradition. The New Jersey transgender policy 5756 overrides parents' judgments about whether or not gender transition is in their child's best interests, and takes this decision away from parents without an attempt to prove that the parents are unfit to make this decision. The policy underscores the parental consent is not required for a school to adopt the student's asserted gender identity. I quote, "There is no affirmative duty for any school district staff member to notify a student's parents or the student's gender, of the student's gender identity or expression." The policy permits the principal to circumvent the parents entirely, having private confidential conversations with the child to decide how their care will unfold. This is blatantly against the constitutional rights of parents. As citizens of a diverse society, we understand and respect the fact that there are some parents in the community who may believe that gender transitioning is the right medical approach for their child. We believe that the school should respect those parents' views. Likewise, the school should respect the views of the families that don't believe that it is the right approach. The fact is that the schools should not be inserting themselves into an area that so clearly involves the right of parents to determine what is best for their child. In every other area of our child's care, children's care, the school consults the parents. If we want to give our kids Tylenol at school, we need to give permission. We have to sign permission slips for participation on sports teams and for them to go on field trips, for having their images on school websites, and also on social media. We have to grant explicit permission in all of these areas and for many other things. Why is this area any different? The transgender treatment plans that we're talking about here are much more risky for our children, for their mental and physical health, more than any school field trip or any sporting event they can participate in. While the policy that we're talking about here doesn't implicate the administration of medication, it does allow the school and teachers to direct children towards an irreversible course of action without any input from the parents whatsoever. This is completely outside of the scope of education and violates a parent's most fundamental right. Lastly, I would think that the Board of Education should be concerned about the liability implications of all of this.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Johnson, live at 63 Quince Court. And I just wanted to say I have one child who's gone all the way through Lawrence Township Schools from kindergarten through 12th grade, and is now thriving as a freshman at Rutgers this year. Another who is a freshman at LHS this year. So altogether, I think that's about 21 years, academic years, that I've witnessed that have gone past. And I've never once, as a parent, felt that anybody in the school district was taking away my rights as a parent to teach my children my values. I really appreciate the education that my children have gotten in the school district. Was everything always perfect? No, absolutely not. There were things that happened all the time. We worked them out, we worked them out with teachers, we worked them out with the administration. And what I'm hearing from the past few people who have spoken, I just want to say, I've never seen or heard anything like that, and I'm not an innocent bystander here. And that's all the input that I have, is that's another perspective. If there's something like that going on, I haven't seen it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Lauren Shalish, residence of 13 Grandview Avenue. Thank you to the Board of Ed for the opportunity to speak this evening. To all the teachers and educators, it is an extraordinary responsibility to be a public educator. It is instructional practice and assessment. It is also counseling, feeding, bereavement, mental health, conflict intervention, character building, being a first responder, supporting families and siblings, and navigating a pandemic, while probably trying to find paper for a copier. It is an honorable profession for anyone to be a teacher, especially now. Thank you to the educators, staff, and administrators for bringing your whole selves to this work. Most significant are the educators, those who identify as Black, Brown, and/or queer, and who still show up every day against threats to their expertise, safety, and well-being. For my own children who are Black and Brown, you are literally saving their lives. Having just one Black teacher in elementary school makes children of color more likely to graduate high school. Only one Black teacher. The opportunity to have just one Black teacher in elementary school reduces the probability of low-income Black boys dropping out by 40%. This year in 2022, The Trevor Project reported that 42% of queer or trans youth seriously attempted suicide. Forty-two percent of queer or trans youth seriously attempted suicide. And that just acknowledging the child's chosen name cuts the suicide rate in half. Just the dignity of their name and their pronouns. Queer youth are not more prone to suicide risk because of their identities, they are put at risk because of how they are mistreated. While national statistics sound far off from Lawrence, my own children are more likely to go to jail or to be dead by the age of 35 than to graduate high school or to have a job with health insurance. My kids are less likely statistically to receive pain medication or to be able to apply for a loan. They already know what it feels like to be called a monkey, to have their hair touched, or to be questioned why they are swimming in a pool because their brown skin will turn the water dirty. I understand the importance of social, emotional learning and the project of teaching kindness, but that curriculum doesn't always attend to what it means to be racialized and queer. And to talk about that saves lives. So thank you to the educators we're doing.
Hello, my name is Lucia Samuel. I live at 307 Bergen Street with my mother. The NJ transgender policy 5756 indicates that the school district shall provide transgender students with the same opportunities to participate in physical education as other students with their gender identity, including athletic activities and intramural activities. I am the captain of the girls varsity cross-country team at Notre Dame. I do not think it is fair that a biological male who identifies as a female to compete against me or my teammates. And I oppose this policy because it discriminates against girls. On average, women do not have the same muscle tone, leg length, lung capacity, or muscle density than the average guy does. Believe me, every day at practice, I can see before my eyes that men just are built different when it comes to running. Even guys who have the same build that I do can take three minutes off my time. I think it is unjust for the school board to say that a handful of trans kids are more important than all the young women working hard to compete fairly in sports. Title IX came into existence for this very reason, to give women the same opportunities as men in sports. You are literally doing the opposite of what Title IX intended. You are reversing history. You are taking away our opportunities by letting males into sports competitions where they will most likely win. For example, the average time for varsity boys 5K is about 19 minutes. The average for girls is 23 minutes. Even the guys coming in last in cross-country can beat the top girls. It's just not even close. If you really care about all students, and not only the transgender students, you will also protect girls from unfair practices like these, and think of a solution that respects and honors all the students involved. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Surti. I live on Fieldborough Drive here in Lawrence Township, and my children attend Lawrence Township public schools. I just wanted to come up and express my gratitude for the latest strategic plan, that I know that a lot of work went into that. And when I heard the remarks tonight at the opening of the meeting about how important it is, how important belonging is in our schools, and I really believe that, and I know that this is backed by studies and research as well, I really believe that belonging in school is a indicator of the success of the student. So if I feel like, first of all, I have to feel like I belong, and then I also have to perform and learn and achieve. And I want to say that I understand as an adult that just because someone different than me belongs, that doesn't mean that I belong any less. And I believe belonging is for everyone. So I just want to say that I appreciate that focus, because I think it is the thing that can hopefully bring us together as a community. We all get to belong, and just because one person belongs doesn't mean you don't. And the only other thing I wanted to say was that it really is sad when a teenager takes their own life. And I have teenagers, so I think about this. And I think that not feeling accepted for who I am as a teenager would be really devastating, and, you know, it all goes back to belonging. So, thank you.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Nina Fitzgerald, I live on Titus Avenue. I'm a graduate of Mount Holyoke College and I have a master's in education from Rutgers University. I have worked for over 30 years as an educator in the state of New Jersey in various capacities. 22 years ago, my husband and I moved to Lawrence Township to raise our family. Historically, it's not been the responsibility of schools to teach children in areas of sexual morality and values. Rather, this has been accepted as a responsibility and privilege of parents, viewed as a serious duty, often guided by their religious convictions. The school's primary responsibility has always been academic, just as it is not the responsibility of students to choose the scope and sequence of a science curriculum for each grade level, or to determine which math skills are most appropriately taught in 1st grade, so schools should not be teaching sexual ideology to students. In my years working in education, I've seen many wonderful examples of schools partnering with parents in an effort to provide the best education for our children. This is the ideal we should always strive for, since studies clearly show that when parents are involved in their children's education, their children demonstrate greater academic success. I've always been a strong advocate for parental involvement in education because it is so critical. I frankly am surprised and greatly disappointed to see the school taking an adversarial approach towards parents in any issue regarding students, which I feel is outlined in this policy. This is straying far from the ideal. It is best, that it is best when schools and parents partner together, each sticking to their own spheres of responsibility, to provide the best education for our children. In my many years as an educator, I've always sought to create an environment where every student was included, valued, and respected. We live in a society that is very diverse, and this policy ignores that diversity. It tells me whom to honor and respect, and whom to ignore and marginalize. If a parent comes to me and says, "My child is celebrating Ramadan, and my child is not to eat anything during the day because it is their religious practice..." to eat anything during the day because it is their religious practice," what is my responsibility as a teacher? If I disagree with this religious practice, is it my job to circumvent the parent? If this child starts looking hungry during the day, should I call the board attorney? Should I call the principal so he can have a private conversation with the child and encourage the child to have a snack? Certainly, it is our responsibility to communicate our observations and our concerns to parents and always respect the rights of the family to maintain their religious traditions, or whatever their traditions, cultural or whatever they might be. As educators, we should make every effort to work with parents who hold different beliefs or values and not patronize them by circumventing them. Our roles as educators is to respect the invaluable role parents have in the lives of their children, treating them as respected partners in this educational endeavor, even if we have different perspectives, different opinions, or different beliefs. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ariel. I live on 74 Carr Avenue, and I just feel compelled to share my story about all this gender talk. My daughter is currently in kindergarten, and this does in fact start in kindergarten. I read the curriculum online not too long ago, and some of the books that were included on the online curriculum were books titled Jacob's New Dress, My Princess Boy, and there might have been a few other titles as well, which is pretty self-explanatory in the title, what they're trying to, what message they're trying to send across. And I presented this to the guidance counselor and teacher, and there's no solution. I can't opt my kid out of it. It's not seen as anything very harmful, yet this is where it starts, and there's always a starting point. It's almost like you're grooming the kids, and it only gets progressively worse as you continue down in the education system. And I think at the very least, it should be optional. It shouldn't be part of social studies. It's not social studies, at least not what I grew up with. And I only graduated a little over 10 years ago from this school system. And I think the amount of bullying and it sounds like the amount of fights probably didn't change from when I was in school till now. So, that inclusion that they're trying to, that they're trying to, I guess, avoid, I don't think it's going to be avoided by specifically talking about cross-dressing and identifying. These kids should be learning their ABCs, their 1-2-3s, and that's it. They should be learning things that will help them in the workplace and in their life. If you have extra time to teach them an extracurriculum, it shouldn't be about gender. It should be about learning a second language. It should be about financing with money. They're smart kids, and everything that they learn, everything that they read about, especially in kindergarten, it's all about what they read about. So, for it to be overlooked as almost nothing, reading these books to them, it means a lot to kindergartners, and it shouldn't be part of there. And I have nieces and nephews that by first and second grade, they're almost fluent in Spanish. There's so many other things that could be taught than gender identity. I don't think that everything, accepting people should be taught at home. That's where it really matters, because no matter how much you teach it in school, it matters how they're treated and what they're taught at home. That's what resonates with them. And it is helpful having the extra, I guess, support in school, but that's not everything. And that's not what it comes down to. So, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Hello. Hello. My name is Catherine Schumacher. I live on Temple Terrace here in Lawrence Township. I know many of you. It's nice to see you. Thank you for having the opportunity to speak. I was not planning on coming tonight. I am a parent of children at Ben Franklin School. I am actively involved in the PTO. I am involved in lots of things in our community. I am also concerned. Some people bring up great points. You know, if we're worried about what teachers wear to school, I think a good thing for the school board to think about with Halloween coming up is what are teachers wearing? Is there anything offensive that we need to, like, make sure that we take track of? Is there going to be a list? Do I submit it somewhere? Do I write a blog post about, like, how offended I am because I didn't like it? Just, I know you have a big job, and I don't mean to give more to you to think about, but that is something for you to think about. In addition to things to think about, with all this gender identity talk, it's kind of, it's kind of awkward, because it's really actually important to my family to be seen and for my friends to be seen and for there to be a safe school for us to talk about our families, whatever that is. And we truly accept your family for whatever it might be, but if you try to come to this school and tell me that I can't say gay or read a book about people being gay or talk about my family being gay, I'll be here a lot more, and we'll have a lot more conversations. But I trust this board. I really do. And I really appreciate the work that you all have done, and I hope to see that work continue in the future. Thank you so much for the work that you're doing, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk again. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Marion Jalosnaya. I live at 28 Clivedon Court, and I just wanted to come and thank the board for your work. I think your strategic, the plan that you've recently developed is very important. Belonging is, matters tremendously to students in their learning, and I'm sorry that you have been presented with a lot of what I view as very irrelevant information tonight about gender identity. I really feel that these are issues that are way beyond your purview, my understanding of what the Board of Education does. You have very specific roles, and this is not your purview. So, thank you for being patient and professional, and thank you for caring for our students and for your efforts.
Hello. My name is Kelly Cleland. I live at 109 Nassau Drive. Before that, I lived on Slack Avenue for 11 years, so I have lots of neighbors, former neighbors and current neighbors in the audience tonight. I'm seeing a lot of new faces at the school board meeting who I've never seen at a board meeting before, so that's exciting. I also am, I think, aware that a lot of people here do not actually have children in Lawrence Township Public Schools. So, I'm hearing a lot of opinions from people who don't actually attend our schools or have children who attend our schools. And I'm here with my husband tonight, and I hope that nobody here feels triggered or groomed by my acknowledgement of my own sexual orientation, but that is my husband. And I just want to say there's been some really nasty things written about my child's kindergarten teacher from Slackwood. And I just want to say, this is the person who taught my son to read, and she made every student in that classroom feel welcome and cared for and safe. And he's a kid, now he's in seventh grade at LMS. Both of my children are still proud public school kids. He's the kid that gets in trouble for reading his book too long and missing the bus because he can't put his book down. And his kindergarten teacher was a big part of that love of learning and love of reading. So, I just want to say, I think we're doing an amazing job. We have collectively in our family 18 years of LTPS education. I look forward to both of my kids completing their educations here throughout Lawrence High School. I'm grateful for the work that these teachers do, and I'm sorry for what they have to put up with and what you have to put up with sometimes.
Hi. I'm Patricia Maldonado. I live at 18 Slack Avenue. I graduated from Lawrence High School. I'm in shock right now. School's changed. I also have three adult children that graduated from Lawrence High School, and my son will be 21 next month. So, yeah, they're all adults. When I was in school, and like I said, I know school has changed, there's a lot coming into the classroom, and I know the teachers put up with a lot and the board puts up with a lot, but the kids put up with a lot too. And there's a lot coming into the classroom about your sexual preference and all this stuff. Why is this in the classrooms? This stuff wasn't important. Yes, we all belong. Of course, we all belong. If we had a problem, you'd go to the guidance counselor. That's what the guidance counselor was there for. So, the teacher has to discuss with the whole entire classroom. What's happening is the kids are, they're confused. First grade, kindergarten, they got taught to read? Great. They're supposed to get taught to read. We're taxpayers. What are we paying the taxes for? These kids are coming home. I'm hearing from everyone, because I don't have elementary school children right now, but I am a grandmom, and I will soon. And I'll tell you what, if what's being said is true and on all of these other sites, Rainbow Revolutionary and the teachers, I worked at Lawrence Township Public Schools in many aspects. I worked for you in Township Public Schools. I also worked for Princeton Public Schools. I know how the schools run, okay? If we posted anything, not even near what's being posted, that the teachers are posting, we'd be fired. We wouldn't have a job the next day. And all they're doing is putting the teacher, the nameless teacher, from one classroom to another to a school to another school. It isn't right. And I'll tell you what, if my kid right now was in this school, I'd take him out and homeschool.
Good afternoon again, Everett, Maldonado, Slack Avenue. Just a few things that I wanted to bring up about certain articles that I was reading as well as others mentioned before. First of all, I'm not apologizing to anybody. I'm going to tell you that right now. You're here to do a job, get it done, step up or step out. I don't apologize to anybody. Okay? So, you get upset, you get your hurt feelings, put your big boy pants on, put your big girl pants on, and take it. Now, with all this talk about queer, gay, LT, so on, so on, so on, whatever your preference is, is whatever your preference is. I'm going to tell you a big secret right now. No one cares. What you do in your bedroom, no one cares. That's a big secret. I'm going to tell you right now. You could do whatever you want. You could call yourself a he, a she, a them, whatever. No one cares. You could identify as a cat. No one cares. That's you. Do what you want, okay? Keep your bedroom habits in your bedroom, not in the classroom. That's where it belongs, in your bedroom, not in the classroom. And some of these teachers, whether some of you individuals that came up to the podium and said, "Oh, I've been here for 20 years, and I haven't seen it," open your eyes. It's out there. Do a little homework, do a little research. If you want, we can meet in the back, and I'll show you my phone in two seconds. Okay? My son and daughter's been going through Lawrence Township. We've been Lawrence Township residents for about 30 years. Love Lawrence Township. I'm a Hispanic male. Never had any issues with racial or people with pitchforks and torches coming at me or anything like that. Don't believe the hype. Okay? I'm going to tell you right now. The only one separating, when you read your opening statements about creating division, the only one's creating divisions is you, sir. You are creating division by labeling everybody by color, by saying you're Black, you're Brown, you're whatever. I don't need to be called by a color. Call me by my first name, call me Mr. Maldonado, or don't call me at all. I don't need to be called Latinx, whatever the hell that is. Don't accept that one.
All right.
I've got a lot more to say, but you guys are going to shut me down.
Your time's up.
I'll come back some other time.
Come back some other time. All right. Next on the item is board discussion and work session. Do we have anything?
Oh, I think we have another speaker.
Yep, okay.
Right?
Well, we have another public input, so.
Hi, everyone. I'm a senior at Lawrence High School here. This is my school. I've been here since kindergarten in the district. I've never left the public school system, and I've always been happy and comfortable to be here. This is my first board meeting, attending. Really interesting to hear. I hope this was not, this is not a repeating thing, and this is not how all of the meetings have been sounding, because, to be honest, it's scary. It's really, really scary to think that there's people out here saying that I'm being influenced or students are being influenced because I have firsthand been a student here, and I've never been influenced to believe or think or want to conform or change into any other gender or identify as straight. I've never been influenced to want to be gay or bi or whatever. So, it's confusing, honestly, because it seems like it's most of the people who haven't been in the district and also haven't actually been hearing these things. I mean, there's one example about the red dress, Jacob Red Dress or whatever, but that's not exactly influencing people to change what they believe. It's more educating people because school is about education in the first place. The only thing I have learned in this district regarding gender or anything is to respect what everybody has, what everybody believes, how everybody identifies. I've never been influenced in a way other than to respect other people's beliefs. So, I don't, I'm not, I'm honestly not even sure what to say at this point, because I'm just so conflicted of what I've been hearing, because it's all been false and irrelevant to this meeting in the first place. So, thank you.
Hi there. Since the claims have been made several times that we don't have kids in the public schools, I just wanted to address that several of us did have our children in the public schools in Lawrenceville. In 2019, I had my daughter at LIS, and after the school counselor started promoting masturbation to the kids on, the kids were wearing, she said, she ended up saying that because of pajama day, during pajama day, apparently this was a problem along with the boys.
Folks, folks, please, 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 ma'am.
So, on pajama day, she ended up telling the parents that this is an issue with the boys. And after more conversations with the counselor, this is 2019 I'm talking about, she told me about the gender curriculum books she would read to the kids in K-3. And that's why I pulled my kids out of the school, because there was no opting out of that. This is 2019, many years ago. It's only gotten much more aggressive. So, I think there is no taxation without representation in this country, right? So, those of us who have pulled our children from the public school for precisely this reason are paying public school taxes as well as private school tuition. I think that as lawful, abiding citizens of this township, we have a right to express our deep concern. And so, you all wake up to why so many families are leaving the public schools. It's been happening for a long time. Thank you.
Yes, I have a brief comment. Aristotle once-
Wait, I'm sorry. You have to state your name.
Carlos Rodriguez, 55 Maryland Avenue. Aristotle once remarked that "The mark of an educated mind is the ability to entertain a thought without necessarily accepting it." And the idea, here's another idea that Aristotle also proposed. It's called the straw man argument, and it's when you purposely misrepresent what is happening and then attack that misrepresentation. And what I've heard from all these parents is either misunderstanding or misrepresentation of what's occurring from a national conservative playbook, bringing it into the schools to prove a point, I suppose. It's nonsense, and it needs, that's all. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Steven. I attend Lawrence High School. I'm a junior. I don't really have too much to say, but, oh, snap. I don't have too much to say, but I have two younger siblings that go to Eldridge Park and LIS, both of which have, neither of them have hit puberty, and both of them are, like, introduced to the LGBTQ, and some of them, other students in their class, talk about how- of them, other students in their class, talk about how they want to be this, they want to be that, they're not old enough to make that decision yet, they don't understand how they feel, what they feel, they don't understand emotions yet. They don't, they didn't even learn about puberty, they haven't had a whole health class yet, at all. And then, along with the high school, you all, along with many other parents here, don't get to see what students see. I feel as though, like, the administration does not go forward with their investigations, may I say. They don't, they don't really push and thrive for a complete result, to resolve something. Yeah, that's all I gotta really say.
My name is Jim Kleek, 7 East Darlene. I've had two children go through the high school, through the school system, and two granddaughters that are presently in the high school. On the one hand, it's great to see this much interest, on the other hand, it's distressing to see this much animosity. For one hand thing, I may not agree with everything that school board members believe, but it's, I want to, we should all remember that this is a thankless job that has a lot of work for $0, and I'm not here, I think it's wrong to attack either president board members, or other, on the other hand, other people who believe just the opposite and are running for the board, they all deserve credit for taking this. Now, as far as the, what I've read about what the state legislature laid down about what should be taught, I don't, I wonder how much flexibility school boards themselves have, local boards, but it does seem to me that it, there's, some of this is, it does not sound at all age-appropriate to me, and I know I'm an old white man, well, I know, but the, but the, and I think on the other hand, that a lot of this, I think, is maybe overdue, because it's, it's easy to say it should be the tenure of parents, but I know from experience, it's hard for a parent. And also, I don't know what a parent, what a teacher, I don't know, this is sort of just a, if a kid comes and talks to a teacher or a guidance counselor about issues that they're afraid, that they're really genuinely suffering with themselves and afraid to take up at home, that's, you know, seems like there should be some flexibility there. But, but the main, also, on both sides here, I just would ask for less animosity and a little bit, listening to each other, because it seems to me sometimes you folks too are patronizing these people who believe the other way, and that makes it chip up here just that much harder. And I know, I'm sure you don't mean it that way, but that is the way it comes across to me, and I try to, I think I'm a friend of the system, really.
Hi, I'm Patricia Johnson. Kelly's right, I don't have any children in school.
And your dress?
2111 Princeton Pike. I don't have any children in school. It doesn't stop me from caring about my school. Our taxes pay for the school, and we should have an understanding of what's going on, because it makes a difference on who wants to move into our community. And honestly, I want to see the education, it's not about whether somebody is transgender, or whether they're black, blue, green, or red, because we need to learn, and that should come from the home, how we teach our children to get along with everyone, but we can't teach what teachers are supposed to learn. They, they're taught in their college career to put a curriculum together, to know their classroom, to build that classroom around what they need to teach, and that's, we need to trust the teachers that are out there, and we can't be told that they have to teach something that so many teachers are uncomfortable with. The teachers don't want to do it either, and they're being forced to do it. And I just think you need to allow people, the parents, to do what they need to do with their kids, and you need to teach what you need to teach, because our educational system is failing our children. It really is. They're not learning how to do the things that we've taken out, even our, even children don't know how to tie shoes anymore, but we're worried about whether they know, whether they're to be transgender, I mean, it's ridiculous. So I just think you need to get back to education, really. I hope that we can build that around our children, I'm just really disappointed. I think that you're going way over your head, you're not educated to do that. What's giving you the education to teach what you're teaching our children? What have, what have you gone through to learn that that's what you're teaching them? You're being told to do that, but what is your background? But yet, you're teaching something, you're expecting your teachers to teach something, that they have no educational background to do that. Let them be teachers, they learned how to do that. They're not taught to teach about sex, they're not taught to teach about transgender. I'm, it's like, that's why people are upset anymore, and it's gonna affect everything, it is. So I'm done, I'm so disappointed.
Good evening, my name's Mike Javar from Valley Ford Avenue. I don't have much to say, but I just think, I don't have anything against anybody, but if what I've seen with my eyes, some of the things are true. Kids should not be tall in first and second grade, some of the stuff that they're being taught, or, you know, leaning toward indoctrinated, but that's all I got to say, totally against it.
I want to thank everybody who stepped up to speak. Your comments are heard and they're appreciated, and they're respected by the board, they're respected by the administration. Every one of you who stepped up is seen, and is heard, and is respected, and those comments are appreciated. It's a wonderful reflection of the rights we have here to make public comment. I want to respond to a couple of the comments, and the board is not going to respond to all, but just so we're clear, the curriculum, the actual curriculum being taught in school is right online. You can find it, and you can read it yourself, not what might be on a cable news channel, not what might be in a blog or a social media post, you can actually go right to ltpss.org, go to Instructional Services, and grade level reading lists, curriculum guides, for literally every grade is right here. Check it out, read it for yourself. It's another right you have. This school district does not engage in medical treatment. This school district does not engage in therapeutic treatment. This school district provides educational services consistent with its responsibility to provide a thorough and efficient public education of residents, which is a state constitutional expectation and right. And it takes that very seriously. There were some comments about policy 5756, which is titled transgender students. You can read this online as well. If you go to Board of Education, all the policies are there, all the regulations are there, you can read it yourself. You can look at the very bottom, we attorneys always go to the bottom, the bottom of an order. If you go to the very bottom, you can see what the authority is. NJSA is the law. NJAC is regulation. And if you read this yourself, you'll see a reference, that's awesome. We should have had them in here a half hour ago. You will see a reference, folks, to New Jersey Department of Education, October 2018, transgender student guidance for school districts. This policy is mandatory.
You were upstaged.
I'll be upstaged by that all night long. This policy is mandatory, which means that this Board of Education did not write this policy. The New Jersey Department of Education wrote this policy, and in October 2018 said to this school district and all other 600 school districts, you have to adopt it. It's not discretionary, many of these policies are discretionary, this is not discretionary. If there's a concern or a criticism about this policy, if there's a concern or a criticism about learning standards in the state of New Jersey, you have a right, just like you had a right here to be heard tonight, and again, your comments are respected, go to the State Department of Education, be heard, talk to your elected officials, not here, these folks are powerless when it comes to what the State Department of Education says is required or is not required. There was a comment about the application of this policy to interscholastic athletics. This policy does not in any way address interscholastic athletics. It says that the school district cannot discriminate with regard to extracurricular, excuse me, cannot discriminate with regard to curricular activities, like physical education on any basis, including transgender status. NJSIAA is our state equivalent of the NCAA. It has a transgender policy. Again, it is binding on public schools, it's not optional. They're located nearby also, if you have a concern about the policy, go be heard there, find out where their meetings are, and when their meetings are, and go and be heard there. Lastly, there were some comments about parent rights in education, there were some citations to some Supreme Court decisions, which were partly correct. The Supreme Court has, in many cases, recognized the close intimate right and responsibility and authority of parents to raise their children. We also recognize the responsibility for kids to be in school, we have compulsory attendance laws, until you hit a certain age, you have to be in class. The right folks of parents is not to dictate what their children are taught, it is to determine where they attend. In public schools, we have curriculum that is aligned with New Jersey state learning standards, again, it's here, but please know, if your students attend, if your students attend these awesome schools, they're going to be instructed in this curriculum, which is consistent with state learning standards. It's not binding, if you choose to have your children attend elsewhere, that's your right, that's your right as a parent. Thank you, ma'am.
Also, I just wanted to follow up as superintendent to thank everybody, we do hear you, we do listen, we do care, and I want to reiterate that what we promote is a sense of respect, sense of belonging, acceptance, and respect of each other. The administration and the board acts when things aren't in best interest of our kids. Mr. Lee, I know you wrote that letter, I know that you met with two of our administrators already today, we meet with everybody. In my 27 years in education, I have never said I would call a parent back and not done that. So Mr. Lee, if you don't have the answers you had, I will reach out to you tomorrow and check to further go on, but we do act.
I only have three seconds, sorry, I had more things to say.
I'll call you tomorrow then, okay? So again, what we're promoting is a sense of belonging for every single child, and that is important for academic success. Thank you.
Brings us to item N, board discussion and action items, which there are none. We will now continue to our committee reports, beginning with Personnel Committee.
Okay, Personnel met October 12th, 8:15 to 9:15. In attendance, Dr. Ross Kason, Sean Frye, Patricia Hendricks-Farmer, Kevin Van Heist, Michelle Bose, and myself. We reviewed the current vacancies for the LDTC and special education teacher, we discussed the ongoing shortages in many certification areas. We had a strong candidate pool for our Assistant Superintendent for Student Service position, which I really applaud the team that took the hours of interviewing, and what a good problem to have, two awesome candidates, and you'll hear more about that in a little bit. We continue to need more substitutes to join our LTPS team, and we've created PDFs and our board paperwork to streamline the process for any candidates that are interested. And policy number 9541, student teacher interns had no suggestions for change. So tonight, on the agenda for Personnel, there's an adjustment for starting times due to background clearances, approval for personal leave apps and substitute teachers, appointments for staff members, leave replacements, destination assistance, teachers and substitutes, Eagle teachers, several EDP positions, leave replacements, and confirming appointments with staff members due to criminal background clearances. And with that, I'd like to move P1 through P16.
Second?
With a motion and a second, if we could call the roll, please.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Groger?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Pluta?
Yes.
Ms. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Van Heist?
Yes.
Ms. Farmer?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Thank you. Next on the agenda is CIAPD, report and instruction.
Great, yes, CIAPD met on Monday, 10:30 to noon. In attendance, Dr. Ross Kason, Reshni Gummer, Pepper Evans, Michelle Bose, and Amanda Santos. There was a partial review of the assessment data collected from 2021 to 20, in the school year 2021, '22. That discussion will be continued on November 3rd, and a report is forthcoming. Given that, I'd like to make a motion to move IS1 through IS3.
Second?
The motion and a second to move CIAPD, please call the roll.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Groger?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Pluta?
Yes.
Ms. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Van Heist?
Yes.
Ms. Farmer?
Yes.
Your motion carried?
Thank you. Next, we have the Finance Committee report.
Finance Committee met October 14th, in attendance were Ross Kason, Tom Eldridge, Michelle King, Kevin Van Heist, Amanda Santos, and myself. We discussed the comprehensive maintenance plan. We are required by the state to show that we invest in our facilities 2% over a 10-year period. We, our investment exceeds that. We considered a request by a Lawrence alum to produce a film on our campus when school is closed. The organization she represents will provide a scholarship for an LHS senior. We reviewed 12 policies and made no substantive changes. We're looking into a credit card exploring a point-of-sale, cashless, credit debit possibility for use in the schools for lunches, school store, library fines, et cetera. We discussed extraordinary aid for Sage Counseling at LIS, and it will be paid out of extraordinary aid funds. We discussed that policies coming from finance and facilities would be ready for agenda-setting meetings. We discussed the architect for the middle school auditorium, considering all possible configurations for that space. Project submission bids have gone out for three proposed projects, lighting on Field One, L- One, LIS locker room conversion to small group spaces, and the middle school Room 103 into two spaces. There will be HVAC time and materials repair bid on the agenda for award. We have a grant carryover with unused Title I funds. And Tom, who, my esteemed business administrator, who passed on the opportunity to make any comment and deferred to me, is scribbling to me that I need to draw your attention to new business number four.
Which I was going to talk about, but go ahead.
Yes, new business number four, coming to you in September of 2024. A motion to award professional services contract for architectural services in the amount of $112,500 for the purpose of renovating the Lawrence Middle School Auditorium. If any of you have ever attended a performance there, you know that you'd rather have standing room only. So we're doing this as one of my dream accomplishments, and you can see that it's going, the proposal was, went out, and you will see some progress by summer of 2024.
And I think it's important, Pepper, that you let people know. It's not just going to be an auditorium. It's going to have multi-use, which is so exciting for the future of the middle school. Sorry, I got excited.
And with that, I'd like to move SBM items 1 through 11.
Second.
Okay. With a motion and a second, if we could call the roll, please, for the Finance Committee.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Groger?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Pluta?
Yes.
Ms. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hees?
Yes.
Ms. Farmer?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Okay. With that, we are at our last opportunity for public input.
Hi, my name is Krista Gervan. I live at 80 Stonaker Drive. My comments, I kind of wish I had said them earlier because a lot of the people who may need to hear them have left. I have three children in Lawrence Township Public Schools. I have a kindergartner, a first grader, both at Ben Franklin, and a fifth grader at LIS. They all go by he/him and have not ever come home feeling as though they were influenced in any way to change their gender or in any, never talked once about anything sexual ever since they've been here, and my fifth grader has been here his entire time. I think a lot of what we were hearing too from people was that historically, you know, things like this have not been talked about in school. Well, historically, a lot of kids stayed in the closet for a really long time and felt alone and felt isolated, and sometimes ended their lives because of that. So I think it's really important that they see themselves in stories and, you know, as they get into older grades, other ways of learning. And my sons know what gay people are. Gay people exist. I have to break the news to a lot of people, but they do. They're existing in the world. You see them every single day in all different places that you interact with people, whether you know they're gay or not. They are there. So I don't know where, what you're trying to hide them from. It would just be better for them to understand that they are there and know how to interact with other people that are different than them, even a slight difference that it doesn't even matter. And I think that I'm very proud that my kids go to this school and that they're learning about that. And, I don't know, I just can't believe a lot of the stuff that I have heard tonight. And it's horrifying and disturbing, but I am happy with the education that my children are all receiving and feel in no way that they are being indoctrinated by what they're being taught.
Round two. Andrew Lee, on behalf of my son, Anthony Lee. Again, he is a first grader at Ben Franklin School. I just want to follow up with, with my email that I sent to Mr. Billy, and I actually had a conversation with Mr. Billy today and had a conversation with Mr. Clayton Thompson. I want to say that I was really appreciative of the context of the meeting. I think we accomplished a lot. I'm not against LGBTQ. I'm not against anything as far as, you know, people's rights. I do believe in diversity, as Dr. Cassun, Casson, I'm sorry, indicated. But diversity goes a long way. And when I look at things on a social media site from a teacher, and although some people may have said that, yeah, you know, this is acceptable for them, it's not acceptable for me. If, you know, from my perspective, from what I saw, there was some anti-police rhetoric. Guess what? I'm a police officer, and I'm proud of what I do, and I'm a police officer in your community. And so, you know, when I see anti-police rhetoric or I see white privilege, you know, I grew up in a social, impoverished neighborhood. I grew up in Kensington, the badlands of the cities of Philadelphia. I grew up learning crime. I grew up learning gangs. I grew up learning some really bad stuff. And I had a choice to make. I could have either went that direction and probably been dead or in jail and, you know, in prison within those five or 10 years, or I had to turn my life around, and that's what I did. One thing I teach my son is, is that he's not entitled to anything. Everything in life is earned. You're not entitled to nothing. I worked hard to be where I am and do what I do. And I base people on their character. I don't base people on anything else, you know? And I've learned that over the years as a police officer. And, you know, even though cops are demonized for the most part because of how society has viewed them for the 5%, let's get this straight, there's always the bad apples of the bunch. And let me tell you, I see them, I know them, and they're out there, but I'm not one of them. And so, and there's a million cops that aren't. But at the same time, you know, when we talk about diversity, that's inclusive of everyone. And so, there were things that I saw that were, in my, in my professional opinion, inappropriate. And had I put opposed to something like that that was along those lines, I'd be fired, no questions asked. I would be fired. I would be removed from my job, suspended pending an investigation. So my point with the 18 seconds I've left is, I just think that there needs to be a reevaluation of the curriculum regarding first graders. I don't think that they're grasping or understanding everything, and I don't think that, you know, a person's influence or personal, you know, personal beliefs should be included in the education system. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm still Jim Clegg from 7 East Darry Lane. I was interested to hear the attorney confirm my suspicions that the State Board of Ed really didn't leave very much flexibility to local boards, and I think that we are, I have been trying to get through to my representatives with little success, I'm afraid, but, and I know you can turn the clock back, hindsight's 2020, but I still, as much as, and as, I find myself here applauding things that are said from both sides, because there's, seems to me there's good points. For one thing, I, how outraged Dr. Kason was in the beginning, I can imagine, because I, you know, he's probably reacting to all kinds of anonymous emails, and that's what's a big problem with our world, I think, is people who come out here to say things, they may upset you, but at least they have, we all have the nerve to come out here and say it. And the, this lady just before this last gentleman, I mean, I, who's talked about, you know, what are we trying to pretend that there aren't such a thing as gays? My life, my, like, school years and even my, long after that, they did pretend that they didn't exist. And I know people who, and we didn't call them gays, I'm ashamed to say, in those days, and we, they lived terrible, unhappy lives for a long, long time. And I know people who were transgender, and I think they deserve respect. The ones I know became, recognized that way, at least became that way sometimes after they were parents. And the, but I don't think anybody here wants to turn back that clock to that, those days. I think there is, I think the differences are a matter of what's age appropriate. And I feel that way myself, but I, and the, and it's interesting, the last couple of things I noticed is that even among the students here that talked, there were different points of view. And that's what's really amazing, that they see things differently. And it seems to me that they, I got the impression that what they see, they feel what's changed has been in the last very few years. And again, I, I don't, I can't object to the fact that a lot of this is long overdue. I think it's just a matter of degree and listening to each other.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tonight, I come to you as a parent. Cliff Williams, 66 Fackler Road. I'm here with my daughter. What's your name?
I'm Kayla Williams.
All right. Watching this board meeting as we were at soccer practice, I felt compelled to speak. She heard some of the board, and, you know, we wanted to make sure that there's a rhetoric going around about our teachers in our school district that we, I wanted to spell as a parent. Kayla entered this school district as, I think, a second grader, first grader, sorry, bad facts from dad. And she was a struggling learner when it came to math. She was in ASI math. She received support. With the help of Ms. Lockett and the wonderful teachers at LES, she started to thrive. By the time she got to LIS, she was making gains. By the time she left LIS and Ms. Fisher's team, she was actually accepted into honors math, accelerated math. That speaks a lot to our district and our teachers, because I am an administrator in the district, and one thing I know is we can't do it without our teachers. And we have wonderful teachers here. I have people, I have been experiences with private schools. We are getting a private school education for public tax dollars, and that's one thing I am very proud of with Lawrence Township. So that narrative that our schools are circling the drain isn't true. We are an awesome place to live. So I know there's some people out there that don't believe that, but, you know, I'm very proud to work in this district and have a kid go through this district, because we do have options. And we chose to come here to Lawrence, where I work. And again, I want to applaud all our teachers and the board for doing some very good things, making tough decisions, and standing on those tough decisions even in the face of adversity. So thank you. Keep up the good work, and understand it doesn't go unseen.
And next, finally, not least, is new business.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Fred Vereen. I live in Lawrence Township, and...
State your address.
You don't get to escape.
I, right now, I have no kids in, no blood children in this school district, but I feel that all kids that are in this district are my kids. And I think if we all felt that way, we would have a different attitude. But I come before you tonight because it's my first meeting that Ms. Farmer, who is the president of the board, that I've seen her participate. And I just want to give a shout out to her, because she's a person who was raised in Eggers Crossing. Family, her father and mother, she was, he was an activist in Eggers Crossing. And I know he's smalling down on her, because he and his wife had 11, seven children, and put every one of them through college. He was a postman and his wife never worked. And so, I know her parents are pleased. And every time she sits there, I know that they're saying, "We did a good job." And thank you, my dear. Needless to say, I'm well pleased. Thank you.
Okay, any other more comments?
Now, would you like new business?
Yes, let's move on to new business.
Yes, that was awesome. Thank you. You'll see on tonight's agenda, we have some substitute approvals, start day adjustments, after-school destinations, background clearances, as well as, drumroll please, an appointment of our new Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. And she happens to be here tonight. Would Dr. Kason like to do the introductions?
Sure. We really had a tremendous process and feel very fortunate that we had child study members, parents, teachers, administrators, all helping us pick the right person for this really important position. And when you have that many people involved, it's really hard to come up with a unanimous decision, but in this process, we did. And with that, I'm really pleased and excited to have Robyn Klim join our district to become a cardinal. She has great ties to Lawrence. She lives in a town nearby. I had the pleasure of hiring Robyn in another district. And there's not many people that I would leave and say, "I hope to work with you again," and she's one of them. So I'm glad that she's going to be back. She'll be starting in January with huge shoes to fill, but we'll have a month of overlap, and really excited about where we're headed in the area of teaching and learning and curriculum and instruction for all of our students. So with that, welcome, Robyn.
And to close out, oops, sorry.
That's a Shia.
We have rolls that are already carved out for you. And with all of that wonderful introduction, I'd like to move NV1 through NV16, please. Second.
With a motion and a second, new business, if we could call the roll, please.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Groger?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Pluta?
Yes.
Ms. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hees?
Yes.
Ms. Farmer?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Thank you. And now, if we can have a motion for adjournment, before I say that, I really do want to thank the participants in the audience for some tremendous dialogue tonight. And as Dr. Kason said, we do listen and hear you, and thank you for that. If we could have an adjournment, please.
Motion adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.